And I will not be intimidated by the threats of the current government. My kids do go to this school and I have a right to speak against that agenda. And let's go for it.
Okay, uh, the next, thank you. The next person is Chris.
Bonnigan.
Bonnigan, from Cold Spring.
Hi, um, my name is Chris Bonnigan and I'm from Cold Spring. I have two adult daughters, so they are no home in school. But, um, I am an interested community member and I'm here to talk about masks today. Um, it's been about a year since I saw my mom last. Um, in October, my daughter and I drove to Indiana to visit her in her retirement community. And we visited her, she was masked, we were masked, social distance, but they allowed us to visit her and that was great. She was in great shape. We took her her favorite meal, which was steak and shake, fries and hamburger and malt, dope, pot. Here are pictures of our addresses for my daughter's wedding. It was great, great visit. Um, and then in December, December 7th, she had some minor issue that needed to be attended to. Um, and so a healthcare worker came to her apartment and visited her and helped her with this issue. Um, the healthcare person was masked, but mom was not. Because she was in her apartment, she felt safe, she wasn't concerned. Um, a couple of days later, she had a bunch of her friends over for a cocktail, because that was their tradition, Joan and Bill and Theo. Um, and then the next day, she learned that the healthcare provider was asymptomatic, but did have COVID. So they tested mom and it turned out she had COVID too. Plus her friends, two of whom, Bill and Joan both tested positive for COVID as well. Theo did not, because she was wearing her mask and she stayed distant. That was her rule, she always did that. Um, at any rate, um, mom was hospitalized and two days later, she died. Now, we can all say, well, she was an old person. Older people are more vulnerable, this is all true. Um, but she was in no way ready to die. She was a fully vibrant woman who was excited about her life. You know, I talked to her every day, we were reading together and... And, and if you take a step back and you think about that situation, it was a healthcare provider who didn't show signs of having COVID. Um, and she was masked, but mom wasn't. And she leaned over mom and she worked with mom, just like a teacher works with a student. And she passed that disease on to my mom. And now she's gone. And yes, children are less likely to be affected by COVID than are adults. But they can pass it on too. And I'm just asking you to think about how different my life would be today if she'd just been wearing her mask. So I hope you'll keep that in mind. And by the way, Bill and Joan are home and they survived. They were sick for quite a while, but they are good and thank God for that.
Thank you. Uh, the next person we have on the schedule is Kelly Springer from Cold Spring.
Hello, Kelly Springer, I'm here in Cold Spring. Um, as I'm sure Old Spring has been here to yet again and here implore you to reconsider your decision regarding masks in the Recorey schools. It would not appear at this time that this plan that we have right now is going well. Is it, um, cases appear to continue to climb and as I understand it, at least one Recorey teacher is currently struggling for life on a ventilator due to COVID. And during this time, I've spent a lot of time listening to the objections of many in this community to a mask mandate, partially to try to understand what other people think. But I find these objections to be, willing, weak and ill informed. One of the last complaints I heard is the assertion that it should be appearance or child's choice as to masking, which this board has chosen to honor. I'd like to speak to this today. This argument is premised upon a conception of freedom as non-interference with whatever a person wishes to do or not do. This is the virtue of simplicity, but doesn't match the reality that we all accept many limitations on our freedoms every day. We all wore coats this meeting, we obey a myriad laws, and many of these people have complied with vaccine requirements that were not COVID-related at this very school. The liberty that people signify is not and was never meant to be absolute. Our conception of liberty is not the lack of interference with someone's choices, but rather the prohibition of arbitrary interference with someone's choice. Mask requirements are far from arbitrary. They are intended to protect people, especially the unvaccinated and others vulnerable from the pandemic. Masks are also a less invasive way of trying to meet this goal. You could legally impose a COVID vaccine mandate if you wanted to, and American insurance prudence dating back to 1905 in Jacobson versus Massachusetts would support such an action. Or we could get back into lockdowns and zoo school and all those fun things we got to do in the past year and a half. We're not asking for those things. All we're asking for is a small piece of cloth across a person's face to prevent a lot of misery and death to a lot of people. It's not a lot to ask. In summary, with civil liberties and great responsibilities, to exist in a civil society is to consent to non-arbitrary major limitations on one's personal liberties for the good of the whole. Mask requirements won't last forever, they may ask little for people, but they are a powerful tool against a terrible illness. It seems like a numbrator to me. I'm asking you to have courage and do the right thing. Thank you.
Tina Barack from Cold Spring.
Hi, I'm Tina Eric from Cold Spring. Um, so the packet that my friend Chris handed out earlier is the MDH recommendations for how to safely be in school. Sorry, I have highlighted all of the areas that we are currently not doing, which obviously what we've been talking about is the mask mandates. They recommend masks. You keep saying that you want to follow CDC and MDH guidelines, but you're not. So I printed it out, I highlighted it, I did the work for you. So please read it. Listen to it. And then secondly, I would like to talk about, um, the multi-system inflammatory syndrome, which is coming up in students. There is currently 97 kids in Minnesota that have it. It is an autoimmune disease caused by COVID-19. So while kids may survive COVID, there are lifelong complications that we may not even know yet. This is just one of them that they found. And the kids who get this, lots of them had minor symptoms where asymptomatic, had a mild cold, but tested positive for COVID. And now they have an autoimmune disease for the rest of their lives. I think that's something to consider when trying to protect our children from COVID-19. They may survive, but they may not have the life that you imagined. And lastly, I would like to talk about the facilities committee. I know it is up for approval tonight, and I would like to understand how those candidates were chosen and whether or not inclusivity was a consideration. Um, I know that there were several qualified candidates, including people of color, with years of experience, that were not chosen for that committee, and I'd like to understand why. If equity is important to you and to the district, why are there no people of color on that committee?
Okay, excuse us, she has the floor.
There are many qualified candidates of all colors, but our community is made up of 8% of people of color, and there's not one single one on the committee. That doesn't make sense to me. Based on who is on the list, it seems as though being associated with the football team, the anti-equity groups, or being Caucasian seems to be the criteria. And I'm not okay with that, and I know lots of people are not. So again, who made these choices, what criteria was used, and was inclusivity even a consideration? 24% of the committee is associated with a group that actively opposes an inclusion of equity in the curriculum. Just something to consider. Thank you.
The next person is Chantel O...
Ozastly.
Ozastly, okay, from St. Cloud, masks.
So I've been hearing repeatedly about how people have the option to mask if they want to, and it's fine because we told them to respect those decisions. Now, I can appreciate the standpoint, except for the part where it's been coming to light very recently that bullying, not only in schools, but in the community, is so relevant and so prevalent that sometimes it's not even like seen as anything outside of the norm anymore. And then you're gonna come here and you're gonna say that these children aren't going to be bullied and they aren't being bullied, when they've already been being bullied over something as politicized as masks, where I have sat in meetings and been jeered for wearing one as an adult and think that that's fine? It just, it feels really flimsy. And especially when we have elected officials here who have been elected to make hard decisions and to do what it takes to keep the district running and keep kids safe. And we know what happens when that doesn't happen, and people find that their children have been harmed because the school has failed to provide a safe environment, especially against local guidance. And I think about the work that I do as a parent, how I try to keep my kids safe from all the horrible crap in the world, so they can be kids and so they can focus on their emotional and social development and being good people, so they have the tools to face the adult world that we know is pretty crappy right now. And how this idea that we're trying to get kids to do something that we can't even expect adults to do, which is to stand up to adversary, especially when it means keeping them and those around them safe, how is that fair to kids? Where they have to decide, am I gonna get bullied or am I gonna not get COVID? Like, I just, I don't see how that's fair. And there's no good way to do it when there's so much heat behind the debate, unless someone stands up and says, this is the right thing. I'm standing here and doing it because it's right. I don't know how many screenshots I've had to sit here and see of people getting their spouses' jobs threatened because they speak out against stuff. But I'm sure the kids can wear a mask, that they're already wearing on the bus anyway. I'm sure they can do that if they really want to. But can they? That's just all I want you to sit and honestly consider with yourself tonight. Thank you.
The next person is Mary Molitor.
My name is Mary Molitor and I live in Cold Spring. I currently work at Stride Academy in St. Cloud. Our school is mask mandated. It is a K through eighth grade with 525 students. The parents of our students want the staff and students to be safe, so they can stay in school. We have not had to send our parents repeated unclear letters with a mirage of confusing quarantine options. We have not had rolling quarantines and repeated disruption to the education of our children. Our parents have not had to repeatedly scramble for alternative childcare. We are doing very well in the face of this ongoing pandemic. Masks are not child abuse. People who assert this argument state a false equivalency that is damning and incredibly disrespectful to children who are actually victims of abuse. It is shameful to use such an argument just to gin up outrage. I work with students every day and we do just fine. There is much more to non-verbal communication than just a smile, frown, or other lower facial expressions. I personally can tell in many ways how a student is doing regardless of what their face might show. Masks do not impede the ability of educators and school staff to meet the needs of our students. I do not witness students having breathing issues wearing a mask, even if they have a cold. If a child is sick and they have an issue with having a cold or some other illness, they just get sent home to recover. You know, none of us like wearing a mask. None of us. Nobody ever said, oh yay, I can't wait to wear a mask, this is great. If students question me as to why they have to, I explain to them why and they get it. They just get it. It's not perfect, but we do the best we can to provide students with in-person learning and social uninterrupted time by quarantines or distance learning. I would like to end by acknowledging those of you who took time to research scientific data and speak with experts about masking and preventing COVID breakouts in our Recorey schools. I think it is courageous of you to take a stand and say what you believe, even if you are shut down by your own board members. You do this because you know what is best for all students, all staff, not what is popular, political, or socially easier. Each of you were called to do a job to consider all of your constituents, not just a select few. I thank you for being on the board of this school district. I know it is not easy. I have worked in school system for 20-some years and I would say this is the hardest time for school board members, probably in our state and country. And I am grateful that you continue to do the work that you are given by your elected, um, people. Thank you.
Jane Conrad from Richmond.
Good evening. Um, I'm up here, you know, our country's motto used to be united we stand. And it was very patriotic. When you had a storm, your neighbors came out and you helped each other clean up. About 15, 16 years ago, we had a shooting up at the high school. And this community, we pulled together and we cried on each other's shoulders, we helped each other through it, we helped each other's children through it. I remember that day, my children went to the elementary school. Today, as I look around the country and I look at my community, we have Americans fighting each other. We are busy yelling past each other, nobody is listening. We're just in such a rage and we hate people we don't even know. We're calling each other names, we're not listening, we're not learning to listen with our hearts, and we're not putting the most important, biggest priority at front and center. And that is our children. My grandchildren are in this district now. And in the Journal of Pediatrics, there are now 175,000 children in this country who are orphaned from COVID alone. We have a responsibility as parents to protect our children in any way possible, including vaccinations, masks, social distancing, whatever it takes. This virus is real, the science is real. I hear in a lot of school board meetings and city council meetings, people invoking God. That's awesome to invoke God, but God gives everybody a gift, including scientists, including scientists. They have a gift. If you break your leg, you don't go to your sister's best friend, do you? If you have strep throat, you don't go on the internet and find out what to do. You go to your doctor, your doctor is a scientist. You go to the scientist and you get the medicine and the treatments that you need. That's what we need to do here, is go to the science, listen to the science, stop fighting each other. Everybody in this room is here for one reason and because they're patriotic, because they care about this country. But we have to stop fighting each other. You know, as it stands right now, we do not have to worry about Russia or China or any terrorist organization coming in here and destroying it, destroying this country. We're doing it a damn good job ourselves. They're sitting back and waiting and just watching us just implode here. We need to have masks in our schools, we need to talk to each other, and we need to start building bridges instead of walls. Thank you.
The next person is Rachel Winter-Ruzanik. From Cold Spring.
Good evening and thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I speak tonight as a physician, a parent, a community member, and as a fellow human being. Number one, as a physician, I can speak to the science. I can tell you that vaccination and masks work. Data proved that schools with mask requirements have less COVID cases. I think we can all agree that we want our children in school. The way to do this safely is to vaccinate and wear masks. I ask you, if you're unwilling to receive the vaccination or wear a mask, what is your solution to this pandemic? We are very fortunate in this country to have accessibility to a safe, effective, and free vaccine. In addition, masks are a simple measure to keep ourselves and those around us healthy until all are given the opportunity to receive the vaccine. Next, I speak as a parent. We send our children to school to be educated. When the schools refuse to follow the science and the recommendations from those who have dedicated their entire lives to becoming educated in the field of medicine, it shows that you truly do not value education. Therefore, why would we entrust you with educating our children when it's not valued? Thirdly, I'll speak as a community member. Refusing to mask in our community puts our community members' health in jeopardy. I must admit that I'm ashamed when I go to local establishments and I'm the only one wearing a mask. It's as if people forget that we're still in the midst of a pandemic or that they do not care. I can assure you that we are still in the throes of a deadly pandemic. Last week, over 60 people were hospitalized in the St. Cloud Hospital due to COVID. 18 were ventilated. None of those that were on the ventilator have been vaccinated. 14.5% positivity rate in our community right now. That's equal to what we had in December of 2020. And this evening, there was not one ICU bed in our entire state available for anything. The least we can do for our community members is put on a mask to help prevent the spread, so that a bed at a hospital can be available to those in our community who inevitably will have a heart attack or a car accident. We did it all year last year. Until our children are able to receive the vaccine, that's the least we can do for them. Finally, I speak as a fellow human being. When you walk into a grocery store or retail store and the employees are wearing masks, it seems to me that it's the very basic, humane, respectful thing to do, to put on a mask yourself. You are in their place of employment and they are wearing a mask. Refusing to wear a mask, to me, is an outwardly obvious sign of disrespect and selfishness. I had a World War II fighter pilot tell me that wearing a mask is the easiest thing he's ever been asked to do to help his country. So I urge you, as we are still in the peak of this pandemic in our community, let us help the community, our families, and our children by requiring masks, because it has unfortunately now been proven in this community that if not required in this case, the common good is not considered. I urge you to be strong leaders, to, although it will be hard, follow the recommendations of the experts and do the right thing. Thank you.
Next is Alyssa Brickman from St. Cloud.
I won't take long. I guess I'm just coming up here to say, as a substitute, paraprofessional, I look for high-risk schools and I say, no way. So you're out there on AESOP as a high-risk school, and I think that's something to be said. Okay, thank you.
So that concludes our comments or requests from visitors tonight. So thank you again for everyone that came and spoke, signed up for that. Uh, we have, there is no person... I'm sorry, this is... Okay, all right. I, based on Sunny's recommendation, I will allow it, but there will be no more comments after you, please come forward. Okay. Can I get your name and residence, please?
My name is Joan Newberg and I live in Cold Spring. First off, I would like to applaud you, the school board, on being one of the few schools who have decided to give the parents the choice. The choice to make the decision for their family and what is best, whether they are masked or maskless. There have been people from the St. Cloud area who have voiced their opinions regardless in regards to your decisions about masking or unmasking, but they have not stated whether they have children in the school board. I feel that if you don't have a family member in the school board, or not the school board, but the school district, that why should you have say? I mean, you live in that community, but you don't live in our community and you don't have someone in that district. Now, if you're in St. Cloud and you have a family member in Recorey School District, then I can understand. Are you, uh... Let's see, are you aware, school board, that the CDC does not recommend that shields are appropriate form against COVID? But yet, children who have anxiety problems or children who cannot breathe in masks are being forced to wear masks. For instance, my son cannot wear a mask, he has to wear a shield. He wore a shield all year in Recorey District when we came here halfway through the year and during, in St. Cloud. He was bullied because he wore a shield, because he had to tell children that a shield is the same thing. And guess what? His doctor wrote him a letter saying a shield was appropriate for him, okay? The CDC also says that masks, people who are hearing impaired, are exempt from wearing a mask, which to me is ridiculous, because people who are hearing impaired, they need you guys to see their lips to read. Now, my daughter, who is also in the school district, she is hearing impaired and so is my husband. And by wearing masks, they cannot, one, learn properly, because they are not only wearing a mask themselves, but they are trying to learn from a teacher who is wearing a mask. Now, you can't wear a mask that is clear, because all they see is your breath. And we've had other teachers who have tried to help her last year. Now, these children that are hearing impaired, they not only are having problems learning, but she was digressing. Now, she can wear a mask and she's fine and she can breathe in it. And I wasn't concerned about that, but I was concerned about the fact that she was digressing. While other students who can hear properly, even though she wears hearing aids, she still had to ask her teacher to go ahead and put on a microphone. Now, a microphone is something that they put over their heads and that they can speak into, that goes around the school. Now, you expect every single teacher in the... Now, you expect every single teacher in the middle school, if she was in the middle school this year, to wear a microphone. Every single teacher would have to have a microphone that she would have to have for her to hear. Now, with my husband, he has to wear masks as of last year, okay? Now, try, think about hearing impaired people. When they have to go into a store and they want to talk to people, you have double masks and you have the polycarbonate that are around the edges that were in front of them. I had to yell and tell the people and make my husband feel weird and make my child feel weird, because they can't hear, because you guys are not talking loud enough, because you guys don't know that they're hearing impaired. But yet, the CDC says, if you're hearing impaired, you're exempt from wearing a mask. That doesn't make any sense. So please, I applaud you. Please keep up with giving the parents the choice. Now, when it comes to vaccines, I can't be vaccinated. I'm at high risk. I'm an autoimmune person, yet they're telling me that I should be vaccinated. But yet, my doctors have not told me that I need to be vaccinated, because they know I'm at high risk, because I could possibly have something go wrong with getting vaccinated. And I know that I'm putting myself at risk. But think about giving us the choice. Just keep giving us the choice. That's all that we ask. That's all that we want, is for each family to have a choice. Wear a mask or don't wear a mask. That's all I ask. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you again for everyone that came to speak. That concludes the comments and requests from visitors. And now we'll continue on with the remainder of the agenda. And again, this is for the business of the school board. So if you can please hold any comments or applause, I would very appreciate that. Thank you. Consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Motion by Lynn. Second by Sunny. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? The consent agenda is approved. The next item is an action item. Item 6A, the Recore Task Force Membership. So we have a list of finalists from the community task force that we had gone through and had applications for. And is there any questions or anything else from the board or the Building and Grounds Committee that would like to comment?
I would just like to speak briefly about the process that was followed to determine the finalists for the task force. We did review every application that came in. Anybody that was not a resident was put aside. It was clear that the criteria required that the task force members were residents within the district. We then went through and reviewed every application and the answers that they provided to the questions that were on the application. If I remember correctly, there were only five to 10 that were not selected. Once we weeded out the non-residents, there weren't many more than the 25 that were selected to be on this committee. So we did take into consideration the responses that were provided as part of the application. I don't know if anybody else wants to...
I would say also, or an employee of the district. They could be a resident or employee, so...
Yeah, the only way you could be on the task force if you're a non-resident is if you were on as part of being an employee of the district.
So with that information, is there any other questions from the board?
Were the folks that weren't selected, were they invited to join the meetings?
They were contacted and informed that they would be invited to a listening session. So they would still have an opportunity to provide input into the process when those listening sessions are held.
Okay.
Any other questions? Otherwise, is there a motion to approve the task force finalist as presented?
Motion approved.
Motion by Jennifer. Second by Chuck. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? The task force membership has been approved. Discussion items. Item 7A, Facility and Grounds Discussion. So we have WOLD with us tonight. And if you could come forward to do a presentation, that would be wonderful. Thank you.
We're going to do a facility analysis. Thanks for having us here tonight. We're excited to be on the process preparing for the task force to start their work. Tonight, we just wanted to share a couple of the reports that we'll be sharing with the task force, so that the board is in the know and we can cease fighting. I will let Erin start out with the facility assessment, which is an analysis of kind of deferred maintenance or maintenance needs within the district.
All right. So the facility assessment, the process behind this was, started back in early July of this year. Myself, an architect with WOLD, and then we had mechanical and electrical engineers with our firm come out. And we did interviews with the building principals. We did interviews with the head custodians. And then we walked all the rooms throughout all the buildings in the district, all of your current facilities, also with district administration. And throughout that process, including reviewing some of the existing drawings from the original construction, we were looking for conditions or deficiencies and, as Paul mentioned, kind of deferred maintenance items that we would like to document. And throughout that process, then we have been working with the district administration to prioritize those and then estimate those costs. Part of the process of prioritizing, I'll talk about in a minute. The report, which, when it comes up, followed kind of six categories as we were looking for deficiencies throughout buildings. And those were site, building exteriors, building interiors, accessibility, mechanical systems, and electrical systems. And I also just like to note that this report is still, at this time, a working document, so some of these numbers may still move around that you see in here. This isn't finalized prior to the task force starting. So working with district administration, we came up with three main priorities that kind of go priority one, two, three. Priority one would be an immediate need, an item that is life safety concern, accessibility, indoor air quality, or equipment systems or finishes that are near the end of their useful life. Priority two is kind of the same bucket, but things that are within zero to five years, where you would be planning for them, they're almost near the end of their useful life, but not quite there, not a safety concern at this time. And then the third priority is kind of looking six to 10 years out in that same, kind of that same ones, just planning ahead before it becomes a big concern. So looking at John Clark Elementary was the first building that we went through. And the main high priority needs there were replacement of galvanized domestic water piping, creating ADA compliant toilet rooms and door hardware, safe roof access. You bet. Repair of exterior envelope, primarily on the original 1936 portion of the building. Replacement of deteriorated asphalt paving in the parking and park play area, and then replacement of the playground. So if you flip to the next slide. After going through, looking at all those items, and then working with district administration, we prioritized all of those into these three buckets. So the priority one, again, would be the quality accessibility items and anything that was sort of an immediate concern. So you can see down here, the categories are lifted vertically on the left of priority one, two, three across the top, and then the total estimates as they stand today on the bottom. Then Cold Spring Elementary, the high priority needs at that building are replacement of failing heating water... Shut-off valves. Replacement of the fire alarm system. Creating ADA compliant toilets. Repair of a small portion of exterior envelope. Replacement of deteriorated asphalt paving. Most of it has already been redone, so there's a big, just one last chunk on the east side that didn't get touched. And then replacement of the playground on the south end that was stolen. And similar to the other priority, main, big one here is the accessibility with accessible toilet rooms and then again, site, the main ones there. See that? It's Cold Spring. And Richmond Elementary, the high priority needs, replacement of the remaining galvanized domestic water piping, ventilation and dehumidification in the kitchen, which is not currently in place, creating ADA compliant toilet rooms and door hardware. Replacing the remainder of the light fixtures with LED fixtures, the gym. And then replacement of classroom flooring and case earth that are largely original to the building or some instances failing and creating bubbling in the carpet, which is a safety concern. And then placing the paving on the outside of the building and the ground. And again, here's the breakdown of priority one, two, and three. And then for the secondary, the high school and the middle school building, most of these are related to equipment and finishes that are original to the buildings, such as the original HVAC equipment and steam boiler plant, creating ADA compliant toilets in the original portion of the building. And also the middle school and the pool locker rooms in the basement, and then the door in some parts of the original building. Replacing the original exterior doors and windows on the B lane. Classroom flooring, case replacement in the original portion. And the middle school gym equipment and floor. This is that, that big value. Looking at the ALC, the portable building on the east side of campus, the high priority needs here are replacing the existing... interior lighting, and then just kind of updating all of the finishes within the buildings. You know, these paint, carpet, doors, cabinetry, whiteboards.
Okay.
And then this building, the district education facility. The high priority needs here are replacing the remaining galvanized domestic water piping, replacing the kitchen and cafeteria HVAC systems, and creating ADA compliant toilet rooms and door hardware. And you can see here's some of the liability, financial liability that exists with having buildings for which there's maintenance. So this is just showing the overall, all-in for every district facility. With the priorities across the top, totals for each building along the right hand, and then the totals by priority across the bottom. So priority one, 26.7 million. Priority two, 8.4 million. Priority one at about 7.2 million.
One of the things to understand about this, this is not unusual for school districts. We've done these reports in dozens and dozens of districts, and it always comes to a number that people might stay through. Many people really have trouble visualizing that you are one of the big businesses in town. Employees of us for footage, and buildings require maintenance. Another part of this is that school districts, contrary to maybe some privately, are not funded to take care of those facilities. The state of Minnesota philosophically has invented that their laws that school districts fund the facilities by schools globally. So you receive money from the state for each student that you educate, but that, it has a very small allocation for capital. But that money goes to books and buses and all kinds of other things too, and there's generally very little left for facilities. There is another source. About four years ago, the state gave all districts access to this long-term facilities maintenance budget. That is a local levy, so that hits your local taxpayers. But they cap that at a fairly small amount. So it certainly helps, and it lets you get some things done. That's part of how you've been getting some of your parking lots and things done. But it's inadequate to deal with this kind of order of magnitude. The convention, or the way that school districts do this, is every once in a while you have to go out and ask your voters in an election to help support fixing up your buildings. And you get widely varying results from that across districts. It is very normal. I mean, in fact, some people get confused by the term deferred maintenance, but it exists because there's generally not enough money to fix everything. And so you end up deferring it. And this list is prioritized sort of by the more urgent need first, but you make no decisions so far on whether you're going to fund or not fund, or if it's going to get put out to review today. But this represents kind of the state of the district as it is now. So it's a good piece of information for you all to have as you go forward and think about what you're going to do.
Paul, I was fiddling with the display. Did you, did you mention that that number is to bring the building back to new?
Yeah, more or less. A little bit about the methodology. We walked the buildings. We interviewed the staff. We had our own engineers and architects look at things. So we didn't sort of catalog every little bit and piece of the district. So there's a little bit of a caveat to that. But generally, this would, if you did all of that, word, your building's going to be pretty good shape at that point. Kind of reset the clock on that. So with that, if there's any questions?
Some of the things that are on there are things that we probably have in our five-year annual maintenance plans already, but probably never have enough money to draw them, give them to...
Yeah, and I think, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think things that you currently have funded came off the list, but other things are overlooked.
Correct. There are things that are currently being funded within the next one to two years that are not included on the list, because they would be dumped off here. Things like that will not be included.
But if they were to happen in the next year or two, that would, by definition, they wouldn't be... I mean, our budget, arguably budget for facilities is 500,000 approximately? Okay. So it's, it's... Yep, okay. So with our, with pulling all of our money together, two years' worth of LTFM dollars would be like one, approximately one and a half million dollars. So it's still, while we're grateful for that money, and that means we can pay bills and go after some of the real high-need, you know, parking lot resurfacing, all those things that I think are highly visible to the community, it's still a drop in the bucket to some of the bigger work that we put off.
Another way to look at that is, and without inflation, without the fact that things would deteriorate further, if you take that 42 million divided by 1.8 million, $800,000, it's 52 years. So it'd take you 50 years to catch up. And then in 52 years, you're going to have more problems. That funding, although it's great that the state gave you that, it's not adequate to keep up. Again, you're in the same hole as the whole rest of the state. Now, the capital they provide doesn't, you need to be willing to take care of this.
It seems like most of it gets spent on repairing roofs every couple of years. How much left out to work in the time?
Ruffs, windows, yeah.
Any other questions?
All right, then we'll switch to that other document. Another report that we'll be giving the task force is a capacity report. We feel that that is an important building block for any facilities plan, because generally speaking, the number of students you have and the amount of seats you have to hold them is a kind of a fundamental driver of school facilities. So we like to put a report like this together. We have spent the last few months interviewing and touring the buildings, talking with the principals, and analyzing how you're using your buildings. So this is that report. This is available, of course, to the public on the board documents. The title of contents. This is a brief explanation of the methodology, and then it's really mapped with the school and show you the results of the study. This is a summary of the enrollment, or, sorry, not enrollment, the capacity in the district. So you can see we have room for about 865 elementary students and about 1,500 secondary students, so that's a combined... So that's a combined number for both the middle school and high school. We are working on enrollment numbers, or I should say the district is working on those. We typically in this report will put the October one numbers, which will be available here in about a week or something. As you send us on this data, we'll fill those in. The conclusion or what you'll find is that you're, you're pretty full. There's kind of that capacity. And we'll go through the methodology a little bit next. So one of the things that is, everyone needs to understand about buildings is that even though the brick and mortar might change, not change, the capacity of the building can change. How you choose to use rooms drives the capacity of the building. For instance, in an elementary school, if you decide to designate one room for music or for art or for special ed, it's not a capacity space any longer in the building. If the next year you decide to make it a homeroom, it increases the capacity of the building. So it's important to kind of keep tabs on this. One of the important things to understand is that over time, the demands put on the school district and the, and the customers that you have have required you to update how you use space and to offer different programs. And then generally over the last forty years, since many of us have gone through school, it's decreased the capacity of your building without reducing the, the brick and mortar part of it. And it's just part of education and something that you need to do to get a good education in the state age. On the next page. The way that we do capacity calculations is fairly simple. These is, this is a little tutorial. These are two and four room schoolhouses, just as an example. And in our analysis, you'll find that a K or a DOT represents a teaching station. So that first building is a kindergarten center, it's a two-room kindergarten center. And it's quite simple at the elementary level. You've counted up how many homerooms you have and multiply it by an average number of students in your district based on the discussions with the administration, that's nineteen. So you can see that building holds thirty-eight. The next example is a four-room schoolhouse. But in this case, you can see that there's an art room and a music room set aside. And then there's two teaching stations, so. And at the grade level, or the one-five level, we're using twenty-three students, which is again based on the average that you're having now. So that building holds forty-six students. If we go to the next ones, this is a secondary example. In an elementary school, the calculations are easy. You basically need to decide what rooms you can't make capacity because they have to be other support things. And then what's left becomes homerooms in capacity. At the secondary level, students move from room to room. So when, when one group of students leaves a math classroom, another group comes in. So we do it a little bit differently. In that case, we count all of the teaching stations as teaching stations and then we put a factor on it. So at the high school level, these four classrooms will be four teaching stations. We're using thirty-three as your average, which again is a true average of your current practices. And so that, and then we multiply that by point eight-three, which is a factor that allows for teacher prep time, basically. It's impossible to schedule a secondary building at a hundred percent. Well, maybe it's not possible, but you'd have a very crabby administrators if they had to figure out how to have every room full. And there's just some reality to things like specialty spaces like gyms, like metal shops and wood shops. It's difficult to schedule those every hour of every day, so we have to make some capacity for them. If we overstate this capacity, we'd end up teaching math in the metal shop or something like that. So for your school, based on your practices, eighty-three makes sense, eighty-three percent. So that building can hold a hundred and ten students, as an example. All right, then the next page, I won't go through in detail, but it does introduce some concepts that we often get questions on. There are some spaces that we don't put a teaching station on. In this case, we're targeting an English language room. Sometimes when the incidence of students is very low or in cases like special ed, sometimes those students are actually scheduled into another room and they come to that room for support, we don't count those. And then there's not very many of them in your district, but there's also this hollow dot. You'll see just a few of the secondary building. That represents what we call a potential classroom. So it's a room that you could convert into a capacity space if you needed to, you haven't done that in the past. And I think in your case, the only ones that are like that are some computer laptops at high school, which are just assigned at times that they're starting to go away. Again, this just lists the assumptions that we made about what should be in a building for a school. So we'll go ahead and go on to the rest. And I, again, I won't go through these in great detail, but I'll just do a couple of examples here. At John Clark, you can see there's a cave and then the four, five dots that are on there. Each one of those consequences, a teaching station, we use nineteen students in kindergarten rooms and twenty-three other grade level rooms. So this building holds a hundred and thirty-four students. One of the interesting things about smaller buildings is you would still have to have a lot of the same kind of support spaces that a larger building might have. And so looking at it, about half the space or more of this building is set for those support spaces. So they don't come towards the capacity of the building. I think if this was nineteen fifty or something like that, that would look a little bit different. But it's a sign of the times and I think it's an appropriate use of space for, for the buildings that you have. Go ahead. At Cold Spring, you can see the people look a little different, bigger building, a lot bigger building. It fills in some efficiency for class size and other things that happen there, particularly with those support spaces. And I won't go through it in detail, but you can see that building gets to five hundred ninety-seven student capacity, which is very close to its current development. Richmond, again, you can see is similar. There's one kindergarten room and then one room for each grade level. It's called a one-section building. It's similar results. The secondary building is a little bit more complicated to figure out. You're really running two separate programs there, the middle school and the high school, but they overlap in ways, they share rooms. So if a room is not fully utilized for either middle school or high school, in several cases, it's shared with your current, which actually becomes quite a challenge because they don't operate on the same scales. So it blocks out more than an hour, for instance, or whether to accommodate another grade coming in. Some examples of that are the art room, some of the art rooms. And I guess I can't read all my notes, but.
Metal rooms.
Metal rooms, that way down.
And choir rooms.
And choir as well. And so in this analysis, it gets a little bit more complicated. We actually assign a ratio to those rooms based on the scheduling that going now to estimate their capacity. And you can see the total capacity is fifteen thirty-four, but that's about nine hundred and thirty-six at the middle school and, I'm sorry, at high school and five hundred ninety-eight, I think, at the middle school, which again is extraordinarily close to your current environment. So you're utilizing those buildings well. One of the things that happens is as schools fill up, the administrators start getting smart about how to use space. And I would say you're at a pretty efficient spot right now. That means that you're using space, well, that's good, it's an efficient thing. But it means you're not very resilient for what happens. If you want to change how you deliver programs, that might create a tough spot or you get an enrollment bubble that creates a tough spot, you don't have very much slack with that building right now. And then this just shows the different floors. At the secondary building, none of the basement space is capacity space, which will be all accessory space, locker rooms and things like that. And then there are some spaces on the upper level. And you can see an example of the hollow dot, which in this, it was a middle school, so it's a hollow triangle. That's an example of one of the rooms that you could fit more students in if you chose to do that. And I suspect you may suit. And currently the ALC, this is the ALC, so we did document rooms and how they're used. But because there's so much overlap with the main building and the students and how they attend that, we aren't adding capacity for the ALC. As the task force does their work, that may change depending on solutions that come on for the ALC. With that, I'll open it up to any questions.
So can we talk a little bit about process? This information, so it's coming to the board and then it'll come to the task force. And you'll present it as kind of, I think, the first two meetings of the task force will be highly informative to try to get everybody on the same page as we mentioned. So can you just speak to that a little bit?
Sure, yeah, generally speaking, the task force or the course of their meetings, I think they have eight total set out, seven or eight. The first third of that I think of as informational. It's helping them get up to speed and understand how your district operates and some of your needs. In the middle of that process, we talk about priorities. So we'll work very closely, we'll get that group really involved in talking about what you do and where you should be going in terms of program. Particularly there, we talk a lot about needs. We try to identify and agree on what the needs of the district are. And then the conclusion, the kind of final third is about finding the solutions to that. And we'll get all of that information at the conclusion of the task force, who will come and give you a report on that whole process. So yes, these reports will be part of that. And then we're also working with the school district staff and administration on several other things that talk about different features of the high levels, early childhood, athletics and activities, physical education, all kinds of things that come into review.
Good, thank you.
Any other questions, board members? Thanks, Paul and Erin.
Thank you.
All right, the next item, equity inclusion action update. In regards to the update on the status of the investigation. The outside firm, the school board has retained to investigate this issue, continues to conduct its investigation. The investigation is ongoing and it is our understanding that they have already interviewed a number of individuals with respect to this investigation. Through the course of their investigation, they have identified additional individuals to interview. Accordingly, these individuals will continue to be contacted to participate in the investigation on a rolling basis. And the firm believes that it should be possible to complete the investigation prior to the Thanksgiving break. So that's the update. Any questions from the board? No, okay, item two. Yep, I, I would say if you have questions, I would call to Steve specifically. Okay. Item two, expand the scope of our equity committee, I think, Mr. Covington.
Yeah, a couple of updates here. One, as you see on the screen, I have a, we have a, we're looking at increasing our framework, our structure of how we do our equity work. We would follow a similar path that we do in our district, other district technology, or I'm sorry, other district committees like curriculum instruction, technology, staff development and RTI. So we would add a Recore Equity Committee. We would have our, we'd have a district equity committee that meets three times a year. So, so right now, for example, we, the curriculum and instruction and RTI, they meet monthly. So you can see that in the, in the, like a building equity committee. So they would, the, the buildings would be meeting monthly. They would bring that information back to our district equity committee. And then we would also then bring that to a community advisory committee. So very much like what we did with our teaching and learning tonight. So buildings would do their work, they would bring it to the all district collect committee. And then that committee then would report to the advisory. And we would have very similar to what we have with our teaching and learning tonight, that we had earlier prior to the board meeting. This, this is a change from what we're currently doing, which is the, we're actually, we have a district equity committee working that Sam is, Sam Cord is directing. And so we would just break out the work to make sure that it's being done at the both the building level, the district level, and then again at the community level. We've talked about this administratively, the administrative team supports this overwhelmingly, supports this structure.
So is that something that would come back at next meeting for approval?
We could, we could bring that back at the next meeting for approval. I want to update the, the policy work that's been done. Now that our policy team has now reviewed two-thirds of the policies that have been submitted to ELI. We should be ready for a report potentially in November on that. After our next policy meeting, we should be able to get through all of them. And then lastly, we have a review of our fall data scheduled with ELI. And that will, so the administrative team will be looking at what our students are now performing as far as their fall assessments. And see if we, where, where we need to begin on those, those data points. So a lot of work is being, is, is being done and completed as we move forward in this. Our Recore Proud is in process, we're still working at the policy level for that. Our listening sessions are still in process. We do not have, currently do not have dates for those as of yet. The review of equity of resources, so Joel has provided an initial report that the board saw early in the fall. And I just saw today the completed report for the ten fifteen, the October fifteenth submission. I have not had a chance to review it, but I will, and we'll be submitting that. And lastly, we, as Jason commented, we do have additional legal support. And that is complete.
Any questions? All right, the next item, policy and procedures, Mr. Covington?
Yeah. Get a lot of questions about, well, how does it? If you remember the old days, some of us who are older remember that, what's the bill or how does it become law, become a bill? Was a caricature, it was pretty, it was pretty, so I, but, yeah, there you go, schoolhouse rock, thank you. Policy, so how does a policy become a policy for this Recore, Recore School District? So I just wanted to call out what that process is. So first of all, all of our policies are on our website. So you can go on our website under information, school board. And then there's a button that says policies and you can find that there. This policy process, I'll put this up on the website tomorrow, so you'll be able to scroll down to that link. One of the main functions of our school board is to, is governance. And governance comes through policy. Those policies and that, that governance comes to us through the Minister of School Board Association that provides that support. And I just put a link to the MSBA's Policy Center. So you click on that and that shows all the policy services that they offer. So you can look at that. So our policy committee, made up of two school board members, two principals, one secondary, one elementary and, and myself. We, we meet monthly. At times we do consult our own attorney, our own legal for that. And we also then do invite people who are, could be affected by some policy changes. We discuss some things, you might have the activities director, we might have an additional principal. So whatever, so whoever needs to be invited comes to those meetings. Like I said, we do meet monthly and we have tasks. So if you start in July, we usually get, we usually pass those law, or those policies or review those policies that are mandated by state and federal, I believe there are eight of them. And usually by July, we have, we have gotten all of the information around that to say, this needs to be changed, that needs to be changed. Again, these are required that we have to have. We also get legislative changes. So once the legislature does their business, and sometimes they go into June, late into June, it takes a while for MSBA to review those laws, those changes, and then get us back the, what we need to look at in our policy. And so we, we do those as soon as they're made available to us. And again, MSBA's legal team reviews and makes those recommendations. We also review policies as needed, so there might be something that comes up that requires us to do a review. But lastly, we do review all policies in a four-year rotation. So we have nine policy areas and we divide them out so we know which policies we're looking at. So policy, the policy meetings are discussed in an agenda format each monthly, as I said. Policies typically go through a three-reading process. The first two readings happen in discussion. And then the last, if there's, if there is no discussion after the first two readings, then those meetings go into consent on the third reading and it's passed through. There are times where we don't go through the full three reading. If there is no change, then that is just mentioned at the first meeting, when it's read, there's no changes, especially around any of the state or federal, if there's no changes, there's no reason to go through the three readings. And so we don't do that. don't do that. And then lastly, our handbooks then are developed out of our policy. So model handbags are, model handbooks are available for our principals to see. They're reviewed in our August two-reading meetings and then uploaded to the Recore website. So that's kind of our policy around, or that's our practice around policies, policy review and implementing new policy. Jennifer, you've served on the past. Chuck is currently serving and Jason is currently, Lynn, I'm sure you have served on the policy in the past. Long time ago. Leonard Sonny?
I was on at the last.
Last one.
Nope, I'm only one.
Now we know who to target next. Any questions, board members, on the policy process? I just thought it would be good for the public to hear how we walk, walk through this.
Thank you. Item 7D next is a presentation, bullying from the principals.
Did anything change from one o'clock this afternoon? All right.
All right, well, good evening. We are the Recore Elementary and Secondary Head Principals. I'm Eric Skansen, Cold Spring Elementary Principal.
Carrie Johnson, Richmond Elementary Principal.
Sam Court, John Clark Elementary School Principal.
And I'm Ryan Hoagie. I'm the secondary principal at Recore. So as we went through this, we looked and started with making sure we had a definition for what bullying was. We've gone through a lot of important work that will be coming up as we even look at the board meeting and agenda tonight with policy work on, on these committees, looking at what are our definitions surrounding bullying and then well as, as well as our equity work with the ELI Institute. So we've had a lot of time to look at handbooks, and we started with a definition, if you'd go to the next slide, Mr. Covington, that came out of Recore Vision 2025, and really looked to make sure that not only are we inclusive, but we're building policies and working around definitions that also are focused on being connected. We all know bullying's a problem, but this is something that impacts all of our communities, every school in the country, every social structure in the country, and it's something that studies are showing us is getting worse in society. So all of us can remember instances of bullying probably that happened on whatever side you were, you may have been on that in your youth in various situations, and those have impacts well into adulthood for not only the bully, but potentially the victim and bystanders that witnessed bullying. So it's something we carry with us for the rest of our lives in many cases. About 20% of students aged 12 to 18 experience bullying nationwide in groups that can seem to self-identify that, and that information comes from stopbullying.gov. And then some longer longitudinal data that bullies identified by age eight are six times more likely to be convicted of a crime by age 24. And really, as we look at bullying, it's a perception in our thinking that is really the problem that we have to correct, and we know that those early interventions are most effective. So working as an administrative team to make sure that K through 12, we have common practices, common language was important for us. The next slide, please. So the definition we have for bullying comes from the 2014, CDC and MDE both adopted this definition, and it's any unwanted aggressive behavior by youth or groups of youth that include three core elements, and all three of these core elements have to be present for it to be determined to be bullying. First of all, there has to be unwanted aggressive behavior. So any behavior that one student or one group of students doesn't want to have, it has to be observed or a perceived power imbalance. Power imbalances can happen in a lot of different ways. You may have a power imbalance when you get on the bus in the morning in, in one structure, and when you go to practice in the afternoon, or when you go to a youth group in the evening, that might look entirely different. So sometimes we see students that may be the victim in a power imbalance in one setting and then may, may see, seem to think they have a power imbalance in another. And then the last is it has to be repeatable. Bullying is something that happens over time, and so we use that definition to also identify what it's not. Normal peer conflict is part of all of our, it's part of everything we do. It's part of this meeting, it's part of what we go through in our work lives, it's part of what we go through in school, and it's something that students have to learn how to handle. Bullying is not an isolated incident. Sometimes people are just mean, and that doesn't make it bullying. And sometimes there's things that happen that, that are also bad, that are not bullying. So if a protected class, for example, experienced harassment, that may be an isolated incident, but is also something we take seriously, but would not identify it as bullying. I think the next slide does a really good job of showing us just what it is and what it isn't. And so as you go down here, is it bullying? Not everything that's mean is bullying. So there's times when someone's hurtful, when it happens on purpose and when it's one-sided. And as you compare the mean moment at the top to the bullying at the bottom, there's really only one difference, and the difference is, does it happen repeatedly? Does it happen over time? And we can all identify instances where we feel bad for someone that we know something incorrect is happening to, and the, the difference in really identifying, was that just a student who maybe had a bad moment? And, and something that's bullying is the repeated thing. And then what we work through as administrators in schools is making sure that peer conflict is, is something we handle and educate on. Those are the things where both parties are involved, can still be hurtful, may happen not as repeatedly.
Just pulling back, shouldn't have touched it. Pulling back real quickly, looking beyond bullying at just how we support growth and achievement across the elementary schools, and, and most schools will follow some sort of framework like this. Right now, it's called a multi-tiered system of supports, MTSS. Similarly, before, we called it RTI, but this MTSS really looks at how do we support students and systems from a tiered support? Some things that all students get, some things that we give for additional students in that yellow of our, of our pyramid, and then some additional supports that we provide for our red students. So you'll see a similar framework that we would do for our reading intervention as well as behavior intervention. And so as we move into the next slide here, this is the actual data pull from last year. So the, on the left is, in theory, what the MTSS researchers would say, a goal is to have at least 80% of your students doing well underneath all what we can provide for all students. This is not a, we're not putting this for bullying, I'm putting this for general behavior and social-emotional learning in, as a whole. I'm saying, we're not saying that 80% is a goal for students who would not be bullied. We don't think any type of bullying is acceptable. We're just pulling back and looking at general behavior overall. But what we do have is our data from last year, office referrals. So an office referral could be anything from attendance, physical contact, to the more serious pieces that Mr. Hoagie pointed out to bullying, racial harassment. And so when we track those across time and across settings, we saw that actually 95% of our students in Recore, of the 2,400 students we have, had zero or one referrals. 4% of those students had two to five referrals, and 1% had six or more. Again, bullying would fall into a, a large, a smaller umbrella of that, right? We're talking about all behavioral referrals in general, but wanted to paint a picture of where Recore students are as far as last year and how, and how they were reported as office discipline referrals. Next one, Mr. Covington. And then here again are some supports that we provide for, for students across those three tiers. All students have access to the, to the tier one, and we use a lot of that as a proactive approach to create a supportive, welcoming environment for all students. So we've got a great SEL curriculum being implemented. We'll be celebrating Unity Day here coming up in October, and lots of other tiered supports for all students. As students need additional support, we've got some other great resources in our school counselors, social workers, behavior interventions in tier two, and then moving up into tier three where the administrative response is, our student assistance teams are teams that meet weekly or every other week discussing students' academic, behavioral, social-emotional supports and trying to find ways to do that in support from our school psychologists, the Ben Sterns Behavior Specialists, and our special ed staff.
So some of the proactive approaches to bullying that we are implementing this year is Character Strong's for grades one through 12, pre-K through kindergarten or in the second step curriculum they've had for a few years that focuses on listening ears and kindness and all those fun activities that then align with our Character Strong. Character Strong's goal is to teach students the importance and strengths of their own character. So each month in the elementary setting, if you want to click on the next one, we focus that these are the character traits that Character Strong focuses on. So as you can see, respect, we're in empathy right now, kindness, creativity, cooperation, responsibility, perseverance, honesty, gratitude, all things that we strive to do well and help our children model and practice those. And Character Strong does a really nice job of real world experiences and giving them time to develop these different character traits. And we're really excited for this year because our secondary is also implementing Character Strong, which focuses on the same character characteristics, but they do it a little differently. So grades six and nine focus on belonging, seven and 10 their well-being, engagement and leadership through there, and it's vertically aligned, so they're never overlapping one another, it's just building on it each year. So we're really excited about this implementation this year and see where that comes.
All right, I'm going to continue on with some proactive approaches. You saw that in that tiered approach. One of the things that we talk about is the RCD or Responsibility Center of Discipline. This comes from the work of Larry Thompson on a book called Roadmap to Responsibility. And it really is a tier one approach that when there is peer conflict, when there are items that come up that maybe we have an administrative conference around or a preservative conference around, these are the five steps that we go through. That does not mean students come in and there are five times before we do anything, but it does mean in that conversation, we walk through these five steps, starting with support, showing that we have support for our students, that we're here to help them be successful and show success at school. We do break down the expectations that we have in school and then the breakdown of where and how those expectations were not met. The change comes for our students when we can move into this area of benefit enclosure. So number one, we work through the benefit with the students, showing them that if we follow these expectations, these are the benefits you have moving forward, and it may be social benefits, it may be academic benefits. It really does make an impact on students. And then finally, closure, and that's where this, the responsibility piece comes in, in that students participate in how we close out the discipline approach. And it may be there's reparations made with other students, it may mean that they come up with some ideas that will help them be successful, but we always come to closure. This is a different approach than pure, pure punishment in which students often don't participate in the outcome, students don't have conversations around the outcome, they're simply handed a punishment. So that's not to say that those things don't happen, but this process helps students to be involved in taking responsibility for their actions as they go forward. This is one, this is an approach that we've been employing across the elementaries right now. We're in early implementation stages. We've been reading the book, we've been doing staff development on it, and this is what we ask our teachers, when there is a peer conflict on the playground, in the lunchroom, this is where we start. And one of the things that, if you listen to Larry Thompson talk about it, it may not be a conversation, you stop the behavior, make sure that everybody is safe, but it is a conversation that you have in private with the students so that they can say things. Often, when we do a punitive approach, we get a flare up that happens, and we can make things worse. So one of the steps that he talks about is really making sure that you have that conversation in private with that student where they can really take the time to process that. If you can see on the side, RCD school educators collaborates to identify values and skills, and those really match with what we're talking about in Character Strong as well. And once those values and skills are identified, we're used to establish that common language in the elementary. So RCD uses that five-step approach, or that's what we call it, is a given five, and you may see some staff members wearing these around their badges. These are the five steps so that we have them right available for us so that we can walk through them. Next slide. One of the other pieces that we've been working really hard on at our schools is called active supervision. It seems very obvious, but it is also being really intentional with how we supervise students at the elementary. So if you were to walk by or drive by Cold Spring Elementary in the morning or at recess, you're going to see a lot of orange vests up there that helps students identify the adults that are out there to help supervise, and if there is a problem, they can find them right away. But active supervision is actually PBIS strategy, and it goes through six strategies, setting up the environment, so that would mean making sure that your environment is set up to be successful, that we don't have trouble spots, that you know where students are going to be, positioning your staff and zoning across those areas, talking about scanning and counting so that you're actively scanning and counting and being accountable for where students are at, active listening, listening for those signs that something that you maybe don't want to have happen is happening, so active listening, and then being able to anticipate children's behavior, knowing our students, knowing what motivates them, and then finally engage and redirect, which if you come back to what we just talked about, which is responsibilities and discipline, that would be the engage and redirect behavior. So working very hard with our staff to make sure that all of these pieces are in place in lunchroom, in recess, morning recess, bus supervision, we, we talk about active supervision in each of these areas to avoid instances where we may have bullying or peer So our response is to bullying, bullying is treated seriously by administration at all levels. There's not an instance that comes to us where that word is used that we don't listen, that we don't investigate and try to ensure that, and make sure that, ensure that potential victim is protected. School safety, student safety is number one on our priority. We then go through and identify, is it bullying, is it conflict? And you saw some of those definitions earlier. We do investigate the situation, we meet with students in question, determine appropriate actions and steps according to policy. This happens every time, and it may not seem visible to everybody, but, because we are bound by data privacy and other items that protect student privacy, but as an administrative team, these are the steps that we go through when things come to us. We just ask that if you see it, then it gets reported. If you experience it, then it gets reported. Those things that don't come to us are very hard to, to investigate when they don't come to us. So whether it's a teacher, another trusted adult, anybody in the school that is working for us, please make sure that you report it and that it gets to administration. Next slide, unless there's anything to add anyways. Same thing. Recore administration and staff take bullying very seriously, and we will respond appropriately when it's reported to us, when we see it. We do our work, we do our diligence to investigate and make sure that the proper outcomes happen. With that, we'd be open to answer any questions you may have.
What are you dealing with with cyberbullying? Because that seems to be where a lot of it is, it's not physically happening in the classroom, it's happening over social media.
That's a great question. Mr. Hoagie?
Cyberbullying, obviously, a lot of times that happens outside of our school walls, whether it happens inside our school walls or whether it happens, wherever it happens, it still impacts our students, and so we have to make the determination, is it impacting the learning environment? Generally, by the time it gets to my, my desk, it's impacted the learning environment or it wouldn't be there. And so if that's the case, then we look at it as a bullying situation that would happen within our walls, and we treat it appropriately. I obviously can't give you specific instances other than to tell you, we treat cyberbullying really seriously, not only with the victim, but with someone that, that has been identified as a bully, because those of you that employ people know that you go back and do a quick search on their social media, and we've all made employment decisions based on that. And so we want students that have made, had incorrect thinking errors in terms of digital responsibility to understand that, as well as protecting the victims, because one of the problems with cyberbullying is it can go into your bedroom with you in the form of a cellphone. And so that's where I think we understand that bullying's become more pervasive as we give kids more technology, there's more access to it, but we take it seriously. When it impacts school, we deal with it, is the best I think I can tell you.
I had a proactive approach to that is wrapping up of digital citizenship lessons that we're doing within the elementary school at the STEM level and, and at the high school level as well. So you can proactively teach students the repercussions before they actually have to live that, all the better and easier way to, to learn that lesson through a lesson through, from your teacher instead of going through it yourself.
And I guess I would just ask, I know we have a lot of parents in the audience tonight and probably watching online, cyberbullying, in, in order for us to combat that, that is a partnership amongst all the adults in the community. So if you see something happening, if you witness something happening, please do, please do let us know. Obviously, school now Obviously, school now extends way beyond our 7:30 to 3:30, and students are interacting throughout all times of the night. So think about your technology policies at home. We talked a lot about policies. Think about your technology policies at home, and we are here to partner with you when it comes to cyberbullying. It really is going to take our whole community.
I wonder if we share this information with parents so that they know what's happening in the schools, that they can work with you to make sure that they're following kind of the same program you are, or just not doing something that's going to be a conflict.
Yeah, I think if you, number one, if you watch all of our school newsletters, there's a lot of information in there. I know the month of October is Bully Awareness Month, and I think all of us have some information in our school newsletters. I can speak to Cold Spring Elementary that we're going to be talking about it with the parent group at the end of the month. We're going to be going through some of the same information just to make sure that they understand the definitions around bullying and also what they can do to help partner with us to really combat it.
Lynn, also on our website, we, under parent, we do have home technology tips for students. This was something new to us last year that we implemented, so it's also there. So right on our website has technology tips from home as well.
Let me show that, I have a quick line, it's also that first anonymous tip line. I think that's really important for everybody to know about. There it is. So there is an anonymous tip phone number, but then there's also anonymous tip submission form. So if anybody feels like they want to submit something that they don't feel safe coming forward with, this is an anonymous tip line, and we do encourage our community members, our staff, students, anyone who feels threatened to make sure that they use the anonymous tip line as a study.
Where does this information go when somebody submits an anonymous tip?
I believe it goes to our, I know it goes to our SRO. And then our SRO will look at it and try to determine what the age level is and then hand it off to the appropriate principal.
Any other questions?
The next item is the bullying policy, which is in the process of being reviewed. So this is the second reading of the bullying policy. Is there any comments or concerns from board members?
Can I just, can I just highlight again that upon review, it was, it was recommended that we take out paragraph two, which basically, you know, it's talked about, kids will be kids, I phrase that that is, and our equity literacy consultant said, you know, that's not strong enough. So he asked us to remove that. Lynn, your question on cyberbullying is in here, in that it is, is part of it. So under definitions, I believe it is, is that we have to treat cyberbullying just like we treat any other bullying. So you can see cyberbullying means bullying using technology, other electronic communications. So it is in our actual policy that addresses that.
Any other questions or concerns about that policy? Otherwise, that would come forward next time under the consent agenda for approval. So unless there's anything that...
Community members, I can get back on it now that this is, you know, pretty good or on the agenda, they can contact.
They can reach out to me.
Yeah, and if there is feedback or changes, then it wouldn't be coming to the consent agenda, it would come back to...
The policy committee on the first meeting in Wednesday, in the first Wednesday of November, and then we would bring it back to the next appropriate school board meeting.
Many of, a significant portion of the policy is following the MSBA recommended guidelines, which has a lot of resources to identify state statutes and requirements and regulations that need to be met in the policy. And so that is the direction that the policy committee has been going, is using MSBA as a resource to help facilitate that beyond just some other eyes and other feedbacks. Any other questions on that? Item 7F, COVID update.
So I did want to share with you the student data that we've been tracking on positive cases since the beginning of the school year. And I'm sure that'll be small. So you can see I've put the first trimester. I have individually looked at our buildings and we've been tracking where the buildings are at. So you can see through the first one, two, three, this is the fifth week of, I'm sorry, let me, let me back up. So the cases that happened during the week are reported to me on Thursdays at noon. It is a snapshot in time, so it goes from Thursday to noon to Thursday noon, and that is the number that you see on the dashboard and that you see reported here. So people say, well, why don't you wait till Fridays? It's just not enough time for me to get that data and then get it up onto the website and get it to the people who need to see it. So we just picked a time, it's 12 o'clock on noon, and Matt Becker's, our COVID coordinator, reports those numbers to me. So there are numbers that will go off over the weekend, they do not get counted until the following week. So it's possible that somebody might be on day nine or day, yeah, day nine on Wednesday would come off on day 10, but they're not taken off until the following times, because they would still be on through 3 o'clock on that Thursday afternoon. So you can see that we have four positive cases at John Clark. Up above, you can see that we have 138 students, and so we are at a 2.9% positive rate. At Richmond, we currently have one, so we're at less than 1%. Cold Spring Elementary, we have seven, again, because there are a number of students at Cold Spring Elementary that equates to 1.23. At our building here, our district education facility, we have one, one little who's positive out of 180 students, so it's a 0.56. Our middle school saw a decrease this week, and so we have one middle school student at 0.17. And then our high school, well, we had a significant drop off from 13 to five, so we're at again 0.55% positive rate. We do currently have five staff members who are positive. And then lastly, in this last column here, last couple of columns here, you can see that I've taken the number 2,350. That's roughly our total student population, not including the DEF. So we're at a 0.77 positivity. Again, our county is high at 104, and our district is 106, but, and those are the zip codes within our community, but as of right now, as of this last Thursday, our student positivity rate is lower from the week before. Actual data.
So you'll be bringing that to us every board meeting?
I can bring that to you every board meeting.
You know, this is just talking about COVID, but influenza is starting to also affect the community, because I've already had one employee identified with it. I know he had a flu shot.
We did. We had 75 flu shots given out last Thursday. There are a lot of bugs out there right now, there's no doubt about it.
I know lots of users in the...
We have in the past, of course, with since COVID, we, you know, we haven't been tracking the flu, but we will, probably will start, because we are starting, as you said, it's there. So if we start seeing flu being spread, we would also start reporting on that as well. Any questions on the data?
I think last, last time we had, you had, we voted on a resolution allowing you to make changes with the exception of masks. And I'm just wondering about the reset plan that had been talked about, I think, two meetings ago. Is that something that you have used within the experience?
Yeah. So in the, since, up to the meeting where the resolution was passed, we did have two situations in activities where we had significant spread, and we shut those activities down. And the spread at that point mitigated, it stopped, and we're thankful for that. So we kind of used a reset plan for them, for the activity only. Though the positive students obviously stayed home for their 10 days, but the other students were allowed to continue to come to school. So in our, in our reset, in the reset plan that we've discussed, we talked about face coverings, and as you said, the board has, other than on school buses, the board is not, has chosen not to use masks. Vaccines, I just wanted to call out here that vaccinated students and staff are not required to quarantine unless showing symptoms, or if we'd ever get to a 5% rule. Unvaccinated students and staff are required to quarantine if there's a close contact with a person in the household and or in a reset. We, we've already been doing that, so if you are, if you are a, I'm sorry, that's not true. That is true. If you are not vaccinated and you are a family, household member, you are not coming to school. And we've, we've had zero pushback on that.
I know I did bring up at our last meeting, but if we are going to allow vaccinated students to not quarantine, what, where are we at with individuals who have natural immunity or can show that they have the antigens or the antibodies?
So I did reach out to, Sonny asked that question, and I did reach out to, through my regional superintendent meeting with Stearns County Health, of which Centure Care comes too, and they do not recommend us using that antigen testing as a, as a out of quarantine, because they, they can't guarantee when you actually had it last and how long it will last for. They didn't see it as reliable versus the 90 days where if I have COVID and I recovered for 90 days from that, they would say you wouldn't quarantine during that because that is a hard date of, that, you have the, you have the, you have the COVID-19, you've recovered, and now you have 90 days from that where you would be immune, or when you would not have to quarantine. So that's what they pointed to, that that was a hard fact number versus antigen, which is not as easily obtained. So if a, if a reset were to be needed, a reset would, would be seven days with a negative test on day five or a 10-day distance learning period with no test. In both cases, symptom-free for period for 24 hours. The 5% rule could be used in a pod, a grade level, a building, or the district. The vaccinated staff and students, if there was a, if there were a 5% rule in place, we would send that whole building, grade level, a class within a building, so Richmond 4th grade, just because it's, it's...
So whether vaccinated or not, if a group by whatever term is identified to quarantine because of the 5% rule, vaccinated students in that group would also quarantine?
Part, that's partly, again, that's partly because the, the methodality of instruction is, it's, it's not easy to be at home, it's not easy to have half your students at home and half your students at school. It is, I hate the word easier, but it easier, it is easier if they're all doing one or they're all doing the other, because there's nothing easy about either one. Under the, under these guidelines, in order for us to determine a close contact, we'd investigate the positive cases using seating charts, class list, teacher interview, specifically after that is all taking place. Usually the COVID coordinator comes and sees me and says, hey, here's what's going on, here's what we're seeing. We look to see whether or not the students have had outside contact, if it's been all family members, because there has been a case where we had three kids who were positive in a classroom, and we determined that all three of them got them from a family member that, and so there wasn't, there was, because they were sitting far enough away from each other in classrooms, it wouldn't be possible. That happens, and we want to make sure that we don't quarantine a whole class in those types of situations. So that is why we use the word district may. So we want to make sure that we're responsive. So I would entertain that this is, this is kind of what we've been doing already, and we've seen, you've seen the data tonight. Do we know that there's cases? Yes, we do know there's cases. Have we been able to, at this point, keep the spread down? I would say the data says yes.
So the...
I guess I'm entertaining the opportunity to continue to do what we've been doing.
I just want to, I think, have consensus from the board that this is part of his, the resolution. It doesn't involve anything mask, but I think, I just want to give clarity to Mr. Kelvington in his discretion within that, in this framework. So is there any opposition to, questions about that process that he went through?
I don't, I don't have any opposition. I guess I just would like to say that I struggle with the idea of natural immunity not being worth anything anymore. For years and years and years, our medical professionals indicated that natural immunity was the best way to go, and now suddenly it doesn't count for anything, and I struggle with that. But with that being said, with that being said, I have no problem with you making decisions based on this document.
I guess I want to go back, there's a section here about how we define close contact.
Yep. So those who are in contact within six feet or 15 minutes or more cumulatively throughout the day. So that's where, again, where the investigation happens, where we have to, especially the secondary level, where they go from room to room to room. Again, Matt will bring me multiple classrooms with multiple, here's where that student was sitting, and so we make, we do all that contact tracing and make sure we get the right close contact, because the last thing we want to do is to identify the wrong close contact. But then also, if that close contact is starting to show symptoms, that we immediately send them home. And that, you know, again, that's within our guise, is that we, if you, so we know, they all go in the trackers, we know who the close contacts are, and if they're starting to show symptoms, we've got to send them home. And I, I'm just going to take the time, the chance right now to say, I appreciate all the things that are being said at our meetings, but what I most appreciate is our parents are keeping their kids home if they're sick. We ask them to do that. It's not easy, because they might have to give up work, but the vast, vast majority of our parents are keeping their kids home, at least to find out if one, it's an alternative diagnosis, or two, they're 24 hours symptom-free. And that kind of partnership is what is helping keeping, helping to keep our numbers down. Please continue to do that for our students at Rickory. If your child is sick, stay home.
My, my perspective on the document, we delegated authority to you, to me this, you know, the details of the plan are between you and your team. You know, barring any major, major concerns, which I don't have. I appreciate the approach to take the extra time and effort to dig deep, to identify only students that would be in close contact. So we're not doing a broad sweep for notification of parents or asking families to quarantine while we want to stop the spread of COVID. And I believe that that's very important. I also think it's very important for kids to be in school. And so I think a nuanced approach is important. And I believe this document gets us there.
Any other feedback from board members?
Yeah, thanks, Lynn. Well, as you know, like, just like last year, most, I would say the ultimate reason why we had to go distance learning is we could no longer staff. I mean, when you have me substitute teaching, you know there's trouble, right? So ultimately, last December, early January, we had to go because we just didn't have the staff. Right now, our staff has been amazing. They scramble every day, but we're making it work through our staff stepping up and subbing on their preps. We do get subs here. They do well for us, but our current staff stepping up and stepping in has been what's kept us going. We have looked at that. There are some things that are advantageous to that. There are some things that are, that are not advantageous to that. And so we've chosen to use our teachers-in-call system and then also have our secretaries follow up and make calls to people who we, who we know might not be using teachers-in-call, but we can use outside of that. This is a, this is a plea. If you have a four-year degree, call my office, and we will figure out how to get you a short call license to substitute teach. This is actually a strategy that's been used in some metro districts, and they've had upwards of five to 10 parents who are at home, have a four-year degree, and we can get them a short call sub license. Pays 125 bucks a day.
Any other comments? So I think I'm hearing a consensus from the board that this method is appropriate. I just personally would like to say that it's, I think it's, there's other options, and masking could prevent all of this if we went down that path. Unfortunately, I don't feel like the board, this board is presently in that position because we adopted a resolution that requires us to vote on the masking component. So I know last time we had some discussion about the quarantine part. I don't know if there's opportunity there. We talked about tracking that a little bit better. And if we're doing quarantine with this, again, I think the objective is to keep kids in school. And I don't know if that accomplishes that or if there's a way that we could try to have those close contacts. Maybe if we're not gonna, if we're gonna have them, where they don't have to do anything and monitor for symptoms, could an option be to mask for 14 days, you know, if you were a close contact in lieu of nothing?
I feel like right now, doing what we're doing, we're seeing our numbers go down. Could that be something we discuss in the future if we're seeing numbers? Sure, but I don't, I don't see it as something that we need to be discussing right now. I believe at our last board meeting, we talked about the 5% as when we would potentially come back to this group and talk about masking. We're not even close to that.
Yeah, I would say that, yes, the district numbers are down, but two elementary schools, I think, had doubled almost in their numbers. The John Clark, I think, and Cold Spring Elementary, I think, if you look back at the numbers. So that is a little bit disturbing. It is, again, below that percentage. But looking at the trends with the district zip codes and what's happening at healthcare organizations. Yeah. So I appreciate, you know, the number that we talked about, Sonny. I guess I'm just concerned that the next meeting, we might be at that number. And we could have done something now to prevent that, so. So. No, yeah, please, no comments from the, okay? Thank you.
I mean, Jason, I appreciate your concern and I, and feeling of deep responsibility, which I can hear in your voice. But I, I feel like we've had this conversation, and like, I feel like I've kind of stated my viewpoints. And right now, the numbers are, any positive COVID test, or positive COVID tests in our school are positive, you know. Sorry, pardon me. But any, any cases of COVID in our school buildings is obviously not desired. But I just want to kind of put the conversation behind us if the numbers are low. And if the numbers get high again, I think it would be important to revisit it. But right now, I feel comfortable with where the numbers are at.
I will respect and honor that. I just needed to share my concerns as somebody that works in healthcare and sees the ramifications on a daily basis. This is serious. People are dying. So. So. We'll move on, and we'll continue with the plan as the consensus has said. And next on to the administrative reports, so there's a superintendent report.
I'd just report tonight on our teaching and learning meeting. A number of us met early, prior to the meeting, of which we went through our fall, I'm sorry, we went through our last year's data. We went through our district goals, both, I'm sorry, at our district level and at our building level, and where we move into the future. No, no other action tonight as our world's best workforce is not due yet. But once that become due, we will have that as an agenda item for pass. That's my report.
Okay. Upcoming events and activities. Let's see. We had teaching and learning tonight before this. We have negotiation committee meeting tomorrow. And then we have the LEA, I'm sorry.
Yeah, the LEA banquet's Wednesday night.
Wednesday negotiations on the 18th. The community has first, first meeting will be October 19th. Benton Stearns on the 20th. Facility and Grounds on the 20th. Then we have MEA break. C regional meeting is in Kimball on the 26th. And then we have our next regular board meeting. Does that say the 26th? I'm sorry, I can't see that.
Yes, Monday, the 14th, 25th, I think it is. 25th, Jason.
Okay. And we'll be meeting here again through December. So for important for community members to know that. Anything else as far as upcoming events and activities? Okay. Then the next item is an adjournment to closed session. So. A special meeting of the, or school board, Rickory School Boards will be held now. The meeting will be closed to the public as required under the open meeting law for discussion of a private, oh, I'm sorry, I'm reading the... I move to close this meeting as required under open meeting law, Minnesota Statute, Section 13D.5 subdivision 2, parentheses 3, for discussion of private student data as classified under Section 13.32 of Minnesota Government Data Practices Act. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Sonny. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Okay. This meeting is closed. We're returning to open the meeting. An error was made in the closing statement of the meeting. So we will now close a portion of this meeting pursuant to Section 13D.5 subdivision 3, parentheses D, open meeting law for communication with district LEU council. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Any further discussion? That meeting will be closed and not recorded for purposes of attorney-client privilege. All right. Meeting is closed.